Let's get this meeting started. I'll call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Lake Elmo Tuesday, May 6th. If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal, and ever and ever.
So item beyond the agenda this evening is always is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as written. Support.
There's a motion to approve the agenda as written. And a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. I don't believe we have any presentations this evening. However, we do have a couple of people that would like to have public comments and inquiries. As I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given six minutes. And please keep decorum in the chambers as you do so. Colleen Swedberg.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to be back. For those that don't remember me or are new since last May, my name is Colleen Swedberg. I live at 6165 Upper 44th Street in Oakdale. But I'm here to let everyone know about the upcoming landscape revival event. It's up on the screen there. And it was at Rock Point Church last year. It was our first time there. It was a huge success. We had over 1,200 people come. Okay, so it was, that's what I mean, what, we all grew Oakdale and that's why we had to move to a bigger venue. And it was huge. I was worried about whenever you change, it doesn't, people don't always find you. Yes, but we did, so. And we had over 350 people inside visiting the exhibitors. Who, and exhibitors are people that educate everyone about how to plant a pollinator garden or how to make a rain garden. Last year, we had six native plant growers from all over Minnesota and Wisconsin. I mean, people came, the growers came from St. Cloud and all the way from down south. So it was great. It will be about the same number this year. Plus, we have a lady that sells signs for your garden, like Bee Garden, B-E-E, you know, Garden. And then we've added a lady who has written a toddler book, an A to Z alphabet of native plants. That would make a great gift for the kids or grandkids. I plan on buying some of those. The date is June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Some of the growers take pre-orders, so check on our postcard. We list our Tiny CC website, so you can look at that and see who takes pre-orders. Again, it is at Rock Point Church, 5825 Kelvin Avenue North in Lake Elmo. In addition, we'll have a food truck that sells great Mexican food. There is no charge to get into this event. And I'll leave some postcards in the back as I did, and if anyone wants to pick some up, that'd be great. I hope to see everyone there. Thanks again. Colleen Swedberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Horn.
I'm Bob Horn, live across the street at the Fields, and I'm here with Paul. We just wanted to say thank you for the progress that has been made on the crosswalks on 39th Street. So, thank you. And, well, yeah, I probably want to say something else. Just an observation of some of the citizens of Lake Elmo. Virginia lives across courtyard from us, and she can no longer drive, and she likes to go to the post office. Well, she walks down Luverne and crosses 14. She's 92 years old, not the fleetest of the feet in that. Since I live right on 39th, I see traffic going from the new preschool across 17 to the housing development there. And so, my vision, what I observed, there was a dad and his youngster on a, what do you want to call it? Just a foot-powered bike. He was a little tight. This wasn't a pedal bike, this was a foot-powered bike. And they were going to go across 17, dad pushing baby in the stroller. Okay. Saw it again tonight, a mom and her son on a pedal bike coming from the preschool program going across 17. I realize those are county roads, but they're also citizens of Lake Elmo. And I just bring that to your attention, that I just got to, I'm sure you have a concern for citizens of Lake Elmo also. So, in my opinion, there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic across those two major county roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you.
All right. I don't want to have anybody else for public comments or inquiries. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the April 15th, 2025 meeting. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve minutes from April 15th, 2025 meeting.
There's a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hearn, second by Councilmember Holtz. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are hereby approved. I get a volunteer to read through the consent agenda this evening, please.
Two, approve payment of dispersments and payroll. Three, approve the 2026 budget calendar. Four, approve cross-country ski trail grooming grant, resolution 2025-037. Five, approve Sunfish Lake Park parking lot expansion. Six, approve recycling grant agreement. Seven, approve stormwater appeal determination. Eight, approve pay request number two for well number two PFAS wastewater treatment plant project. Nine, approve pay.
Just water treatment. Just water treatment. We're not treating wastewater.
There is a P there.
Water Treatment Plant.
WTP, Water Treatment Plant.
I can't read. Just so people don't think we're doing a wastewater treatment plant.
Nine, well luckily, that's the same one here. So, nine, approve pay request number three for well number two PFAS WTP project. Ten, approve date for city administrator annual review. Eleven, approve hiring of administrative services coordinator.
I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second.
We have a motion in a second by Councilmember Dragasic and Councilmember Hearn. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda is approved. Getting into the regular agenda, item number 12 is public improvement hearing, approve resolution ordering the improvement, accept bids and award contract for the 2025 and utility improvements, resolution 2025-038.
Be right with you. Thank you. Mayor and Council, before you tonight with an item to discuss, recently received bids, and some potential council action. I have a brief presentation, and afterwards, I'll step back for the public hearing. So, I'm going to... There we go. So again, this item's been before council a number of times this spring. It's the 2025 street utility improvements. Just to talk about what we're going to be discussing this evening, just going to recap a lot of information that council's heard before. And then, I think the big thing is discussing the bids that we received through the public process. By the way, this is the really snappy new Lake Elmo standard template for presentations. So, I feel very honored to be giving this to you here tonight, so. So, discuss project schedule. Here we are, May 6th. We are at the next step of statutory process, Minnesota statute 429, where we call for an improvement hearing, and council then takes action to order the improvement. This again is to, this again is to address the five project areas that are part of the greater project. That would be Judith Mary Manor, Prairie Hamlet, Lake Elmo Vista, Rolling Hills Estates, and Teal Pass Estates, oh, and Irish Court North. To recap the scope of improvements, we're reclaiming and rebuilding the streets, adding concrete curb and gutter. There's been geotechnical investigations done out there where we've based our pavement recommendations and street recommendations upon. Council considered water main extensions at one point in some neighborhoods, and it was ultimately decided that we were not going to move forward with any water main this year. The geometry of the street is being more or less matched with the roads being replaced. We are replacing the asphalt edging with new concrete curb and gutter, and there are drainage improvements and repairs being made as a part of the street improvements also. So this is preliminary assessment information. This information's remained consistent through the process so far. Council policy, or city policy, is to assess 30% of eligible project costs. Just, I've kind of summarized the costs in the table. Council has seen this a number of times. I can jump back to it if there are any specific questions, but these costs have remained unchanged at this time. One thing to touch on again is, that was, it's new to the neighborhoods, would be some parking restrictions in streets less than 28 feet in width. This is per city policy. This information's been shared with council and the neighborhoods. So it's restricting parking in cul-de-sacs along the edge. It's restricting parking to one side, again, along these streets that are narrower. In this case, this includes 59th Street Court, 55th Street, and July Way. And we would be installing signage if approved. We did have a neighborhood meeting for each of the project areas over the last few weeks. We had very attendance, but generally, a lot of the same kind of questions and comments were heard across the meetings. So folks were generally appreciative of the opportunity to provide information and get feedback, or give feedback. A lot of the most common questions were related to construction. And we don't, we have a hard time answering those right now because we haven't ordered a contractor, we don't have a schedule. Once we do have a contractor on board, if council chooses to move forward, we will have another open house, we'll have an open house style meeting for the greater group. We don't, you know, I don't think it's beneficial to have the five separate meetings and it becomes time-consuming. And at that meeting, folks will be able to have scheduling questions addressed, some of the things, you know, property-specific questions addressed, and we'll be able to give some much better information there. There was some consternation over the, some of the new no-parking restrictions being proposed. We, you know, I will note that we did report to those folks that, you know, Lake Elmo doesn't have a policeman roaming around looking for, you know, folks to give tickets to parked on a residential street posted no parking. You know, it was, it's, it comes down to maintenance and operations and public safety for the rationale. But if you're going to have a big party, a grad party, something like that, you know, work with your, we encourage folks to talk to their, talk to your neighbors. If you feel comfortable calling the city and just saying, hey, I'm going to have people over, we could probably relax the restrictions, and it wouldn't be a big deal.
We do have permits available for that, daily use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we received seven bids for the project, and the low bid was Valley Paving Incorporated. And their bid came in at a little under $1.5 million for construction, $1,485,463.50. So revising the project cost with this updated bid, which is significantly lower than our engineer's estimate, which is about $1.9 million, we have a project cost of just under $2.1 million. So those assessments that I showed you earlier, those have remained consistent, those preliminary assessment amounts. We here will revise final assessments once we know all costs at the end of the project. You know, generally, looking at the low bid and the project costs, I could safely tell folks that your assessment will be going down in all likelihood from the preliminary amount. How much, I'm a little hesitant to say just because there are unknowns out there, but I could say with a strong degree of certainty that assessments will be going down from the preliminary amount. So it's recommended that, you know, to improve the street and drainage systems in the five neighborhoods identified, it's recommended the feasibility reports and plans and specifications. It's recommended that the improvements be assessed to each property in accordance with city policy. It's recommended that the street and storm sewer improvements be payable over, be made payable over 15 years and charged an interest rate of 1% over the bond rate for the project. And this project is, as proposed, is technically and financially feasible, necessary and cost-effective, and will result in benefits to properties. So tonight, you know, council will hold a public hearing. I'm going to step back for that. And following the hearing, we're recommending that council should consider approving a resolution, ordering the improvements, accepting bids, and awarding a contract to Valley Paving for the 2025 street improvements. And then, we're also recommending that the city council authorize the city administrator to enter into a material testing contract for the project in the not-to-exceed amount of $30,000 to provide quality control, quality assurance for the construction.
Questions for a step back?
Yes, two questions. Thank you, Nathan, for that. One, with that bid being, I mean, well over 20% less than anticipated, I guess on our end, usually, the estimates are pretty close to what comes in, at least for the low bid. I assume that was then looked into to make sure that they did their numbers correct, and they're not shortchanging themselves on any of the material costs, they're not doing something that's going to come back to bite us.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Holtz. We do our due diligence when the bids come in. When I talk about a little bidder, it's the little responsible bidder. And Valley Paving is, we've spoken with them, and they're good with their numbers. I will, I will tell you that, you know, we did receive seven bids, a good number of bids, and there was a pretty big spread. Well, we, you know, there was a handful that were pretty low and a handful that were closer to where we thought numbers were coming in, about $1.9 million.
Thank you. And then, second one, in terms of the way the standards are applying with no parking on one side, and we received plenty of quality feedback from residents, in terms of, when would we have the discussion about possibly which side of the street? We're not discussing that at this point, correct? That can be something at a future point? Because I know there was a valid idea as to maybe it should be on a certain side of the street from a resident that had provided feedback.
Sure. I guess, Councilmember Holtz, I might defer to Director Powers to answer that, but I'll take a stab at it. I think that policy sets it on one side of the street, and I, I'm not exactly sure the rationale. Sometimes it has to do with mailbox placement, things like that. But I think we're, I think we could be flexible.
Yeah, I can help you too, Nate. You're pretty right on. We take a look, see where the mailbox placements are and fire hydrants, and then a lot of times where the majority of the driveways are, so we can allow for as much parking as possible. So the three things are really what we determine by.
Gotcha. But that hasn't been determined yet for this?
We had a preliminary design of what we recommend, but it's up to council to decide. We also look at inside corners and site visibility for driving lanes.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Hearn.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. One, got a lot of feedback on the previous road and kind of the lifespan, I think it was specifically with 55th Street. I guess one of the questions that was coming up in my mind is, you know, the previous time that this was redone, the bituminous curbs were put in versus the concrete. Does that change the life expectancy that we would, you know, I think the number was thrown around kind of typically of 25 to 30 years for these roads is kind of expected. We've also heard a lot that if we put the concrete curbs on, that extends the life, I believe closer to that 25 to 30, where if we don't, it is shorter. I tried to do some research, I struggled to find anything, maybe you have some better civil engineering websites to look at, but if you could maybe speak on that a little bit as far as life expectancy with or without those concrete curbs?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Hearn. So, concrete curb, it functions a few ways, but the number one thing is that it does extend the life of a bituminous pavement. Bituminous material is flexible, and concrete curb is, it's a rigid material, concrete in general, I guess. So when you, when, you know, that curb is placed, it creates this confinement for the edge of the pavement, and that does a couple of things. One is it kind of structurally reinforces the roadway across, because if you think about a heavy load on top of a roadway or on top of anything flexible, it kind of wants it to spread out. Well, the curb keeps it together so the road structure stays more solid. And two, the number one source of deterioration for pavements in Minnesota is moisture. And concrete curb and gutter, when properly, when bituminous is properly constructed and sealed up against that gutter pan, it provides a way to get moisture off the road surface without getting into the subgrade. And, you know, while we do have road restrictions at certain times of year, and due to softening subgrades, there are large vehicles that are exempt, you know, garbage trucks, you know, delivery trucks, you know, city maintenance, snowplows, things like that, you know, that can really, you know, do some damage to, you know, old residential roadways, you know, with lacking that concrete curb and gutter. But I would just say the number one, really the number one strategy to extend the life of a, especially like a bituminous roadway constructed in a neighborhood environment is to put concrete curb on the actual road.
And are you aware of any data as far as life expectancy of the bituminous pavement without the concrete curbs? Versus with?
I guess comparing them, you know, you can get data across an entire spectrum. What I will say is that roads built to a modern standard, like we're doing in Lake Elmo, with concrete curb and gutter on the edge, and property-time maintenance should see a life of closer to 50 years. You know what I mean? It, we.
With obviously.
With, like I said, with proper maintenance. So I'm talking about crack seals, chip seals, milling overlay timed appropriately to refresh and reset that distress curve. But, I mean, I would, I can't stress enough how the concrete curb is really, and it's a very cost-effective strategy to do it, too.
Okay. And then, so a follow-up question for that, and I apologize if I missed it in the presentation, but with the curbs that are planned to be built with this, are we talking the surmountable, the flat? Was, if I was in there and I missed it, I apologize, but you could speak on that a little?
Absolutely. So we're placing a B-style, so some, call it a high back, it's the straight up, you know, kind of comes off, the face kind of has got a little slant to it, but it's what you would think of when you think of conventional curb and gutter. Yeah. Not a surmountable. At places, at driveways will be depressed, you know, for, you know, cars to pass through, but it's only a four-inch height. And we've, we're using a four-inch instead, a six-inch is kind of the standard in an urban or suburban environment. We use a four-inch out here because we find it fits better when replacing that old bituminous rolled edge with kind of yards and grades around it, you know? It also is more easy to mount if you're in a car and wanting to pull in or something, you know what I mean? You've got a car full of, you know, pumpkins and tallowine, and you want to pull them into your front yard and set them up or something, I don't know, you know? But it's just, it's, it's been what the city's been using for a while, and it works very well.
Sorry, yeah, just one more, kind of, again, from the feedback that I've been seeing, there's a lot of, you know, we want to really preserve the character of this area of Lake Elmo. Obviously, having curbs is going to look different than what's there currently as far as going with an option with the flat concrete curb. Is, again, is there any reason that we would want to avoid that versus why maybe the, like the four-inch option is the one that's being recommended?
So there's a couple of big reasons, and one is to control drainage. You know, we need that, we need a curb of some height because, you know, not all streets just run right off into a flat, you know, wetland or, you know, stretch of woods or something like that, you know what I mean? We want to keep the drainage running in the street to the storm sewer systems, okay? And the other big one is winter maintenance. And, you know, the plows use the curb as a guide, and it also keeps the plows from getting into people's boulevards and tearing things up. So it, it, it's, it's, you know, Lake Elmo does use a variety of curb types. I'll maybe back up on that point for a second. You've probably noticed some of the flat curbing around. But in the applications where we're proposing high-back curb here in neighborhood cul-de-sacs, it's really, it really works best.
Thank you.
Anything?
Nothing for me. You're doing good.
All right. Thanks, Nick. I'll entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion to go into a public hearing for the 2025 street and utility improvements. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We will go into public hearing here at 7:28. And I've got three people that wish to speak. If you did not, there's some sheets in the back. If you wanted to speak and your names are on one of these three, you can fill one out and give it to Ms. Johnson. I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, along with your address, and you'll have six minutes to speak. And just keep, make sure we keep decorum in the council chambers. Karen Gronos-Gronofsky.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Karen Gronofsky. I live at 9855 55th Street North, and I'm somewhat representing our street. I have two other homeowners with me, one couldn't attend, and so, you know, we're all on the same page. We feel a little discouraged, to say the least, at this point. I saw in your presentation that there were some neighborhood meetings in January. None of us heard of them or attended them. So I'm not sure, this feels very late in the game for us to be coming here when it's just about to be approved. I know that everyone emailed, so I don't want to belabor the points that were in there, and I appreciate your questions on the curb, as that was obviously, you know, one of the main issues that we had. as that was obviously, you know, one of the main issues that we had. We do feel like our street is just a quiet, quaint street. It's got a farm-like kind of feel to it, and this is changing it more so than you even mentioned, I think. So, hearing the discussions on the curb, I feel like that's already going to be set, and nothing that we say now will change it. But if there was any room to not do that on our street, that would be the preference for our homeowners. The, our friend that lives at the end of the street says she hasn't had drainage problems. And we have a, not only in our cul-de-sac, we have the little circle inside the cul-de-sac. So to put two curbs there, it's just a lot of curb. I feel like it would be harder for the plows to get around it, but maybe not. So the curb's really just going to change the look and feel of it, which is upsetting. But maybe even the bigger point is the no parking. So I understand there might be some discussions to change the side of the road, and we were one of the ones that did want to change that. The side that we saw is, of no parking is where most of the driveways are, including the cul-de-sac. And we haven't had any issues with parking ever. And I know the homeowner next to me, he said he's lived here over 25 years. We've never had an issue with parking. So I'm not sure why the regulation needs to be presented, why we even have to have these discussions to be putting it in, to say it's, you know, there's not going to be many tickets. That seems like that's not looking at the cause of it. And I know for me personally, we love our front lawn, and I'm going to be looking down now, when I saw the picture, not one, but two, no parking signs will now be front and center at the end of our driveway, because it's right at the end of the cul-de-sac, and there needs to be one in the beginning and one in the end. So I just, I don't understand why we're trying to fix something that's not broken, and that's changing the look and feel for our neighborhood. So, I really would appreciate it for the somehow more collaboration and stewardship from the council. It just doesn't feel like, it just doesn't feel like it's collaborative. We just keep seeming to have issues that we're not aware of and that are coming, that affect our homes here, you know? So, you did mention that the curbs are more modern, and we understand that. We're seeing all of the building, all of the corners that are getting bulldozed with all the new developments. So I know Lake Elmo, that's clearly a modern direction that we're going in away from that farm-like feel. But if there's any way that we could preserve 55th Street North, it's just five of us with the largest assessment that we're hoping to pay for for this, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Burgie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brad Burgie. Having moved into the Rolling Hills Estates in early 1995.
Mr. Burgie, could you please state your address for the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
9481 57th Street North, where my wife and I have resided. If I could, for the record, I would like to second the previous, or I would say the upcoming comments that John Bourbon will be addressing. We thank you for having this opportunity to express our concerns regarding this assessment coming up. Primarily, our focus is to submit to the city at this public hearing a request to receive a fair and reasonable assessment reduction in the upcoming street improvements this year. Our paid assessment in 2010 for a street improvement that resulted in a shorter-than-normal lifespan and occurred with faulty installation makes us extremely disappointed. We and other neighbors and the city have not received our money's worth. And I believe that justifies a lower assessment for not receiving the full benefit. In previous weeks, we have become aware of the geotechnical findings, the opinions from some stating that there was a substandard road following the 2010 project, and the life of the road not nearly what it should be. Other supportive information leads us to ensure more accountability with the new project in the new street repaired this year. Upon researching typical road lifespans, roads declared low traffic usually achieve 20 to 30 years or more in longevity. I think an expectation of 25 years is reasonable, since other streets are averaging that in the neighborhood. The responsibility to maximize road lifespans lie with the implementing the proposed improvement and not the homers. The selected company, which will install the improved road in 2025, will also have to adhere to FDR regulations in consideration of the previous reclamation plans that occurred in 2010, which we already paid for in that assessment. When factoring in the construction inconvenience and the further disruption sooner than we had expected, we feel that should also prompt a reduction in the assessment as well. Our neighbors, John and Lisa Bourbon, have lived in Rolling Hills a few more years than us, so we share similarities surrounding the previous assessments. Length of residing here with two roads already, lack of road longevity, and of course, the money spent on an unfulfilled investment. John Bourbon has shared with us much information on his findings. We concur on many points and support his results entirely. The logic used to arrive at a fair and reasonable reduction is suitable, and we believe justified. We therefore agree with the 10% figure for our special assessment. Finally, we are fully aware of this unique and possible rare situation that has developed in our neighborhood, but we're resolved to request a way to make it better for all involved. We are aware that the final assessment amount will not be known perhaps until the project is completed. We act in good faith with the City of Lake Elmo and trust that all parties involved will do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgie. John Bourbon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is John Bourbon, and I have resided with my wife Lisa at 9612 57th Street North in Rolling Hills since 1994. We're one of the originals, as we say in our neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding this 2025 street improvement plan. In the email I sent you over the weekend, I have reversed my previous opposition to our section of the road being in this plan, and it's based on the communications with Mayor Keatinghead, Councilman Dragasich from the last meeting, conversations with city engineering staff, and reviewing the geotechnical report. Not a road engineer, but I'm an engineer. I could read those reports. So there's certainly issues with that road. So I therefore am here to support the two resolutions in front of you and ask that you approve them. But while assessment language is not included in a resolution, but is rather part of city policy, I've included in the email I sent you guys my reason for a special request for a reduction in the proposed assessment from the normal 30% to 10%. I believe this order of reduction is within your authority, and I hope you have found it to be based on reasonable argument. And rather than repeat all the information I gave you in the email, I just want to highlight a few things. As original residents, Rolling Hills now being faced paying for the road a third time, even though the development is 32 years old, the evidence I provided in my email supports that each road project was intended to meet MINDOT standards that were at the time. And so therefore, we should have expected reasonable life out of the road. And those standards are basically, you're using MINDOT standards again today, so there's nothing different. The reclamation was done in a very similar way. The language is, was the same from the 2010 project. And as residents, we're assessed 30% of the cost of road improvement, because we're said to benefit directly from the improvement. It's the road right in front of our house, so we pay more than just the average Lake Elmo citizen who might use the road every now and then. And we pay for everybody else's road a little bit. Our role in this, in the improvement is limited, really providing our opinions in meetings like this one. But in the end, as we heard from the last meeting, the decision is not ours to make, nor is the responsibility and accountability that the improvement is properly executed, maintained, et cetera. All we do, we pay 30% of the costs, and we hope we get the useful life out of the investment. That's all we want. So, I've used, and expected useful life of the road like ours to be 25 years. And I think that number seems reasonable based on other roads in our neighborhood, and is also consistent with what was mentioned in the city council meeting on March 18th. Even a number as high as 30 years is mentioned in the meeting, but to be more reasonable, I've used 25. And thank you, Councilman Hearn, for your email earlier this evening. And in the discussion, Mr. Stanley, saying that if there was concrete, it could have lasted 50 years. So I understand the point that with bituminous curb, you get less life, but I'm talking about 25 years versus 50 years. I still think 25 is reasonable. And then, no matter what model you want to consider, I'm an engineer. I've dealt with models my whole life. The fact that we have data, the rest of 57th lasted 24 years, the one cul-de-sac 24, the other cul-de-sac 28, doesn't matter what the models say. That data for that neighborhood under those conditions with those vehicles, this weather, that trumps all models. And, you know, we could talk, I'd love to argue if anyone doesn't believe that, but I only have three more minutes. So rational for reduced assessment is simply based on the fact that the two iterations of 57th Street have only lasted cumulative 32 years, 18 years short of the 50 they should have. 50 is two times 25. Yet, I paid my required share of 50 years' worth of road. So, with the next road, maybe I need to adjust my numbers here. I assumed it was still going to be 25 years. I've basically already paid for 18 years of the next road, if you look at that. So I've been shorted 18 years, the next road, full assessment for whatever how many years it's going to last. I've already paid. And so as Brad Burgie and other residents have paid different amounts, because they moved in the neighborhood at a different time, but I've already paid for a big portion of the next road. And I wish the next one's going to last 50. I won't be around here to verify, but first road 18, second road 15, we're going down. So I, 50, I'm a little, I hope so, but hopefully the next homeowner will get that benefit. So, again, with my model, I had seven years remaining benefit. That was an 8.4% assessment, the way the math worked. I bumped that up to 10, because there's aspects of this new road that were not in the old road, and that's an added benefit to me. So, while actual costs and the assessments are yet to be determined, the model, this economic model I presented is independent of actual costs, because it's based on percentages. If the costs go up, 10% of it goes up. If it goes down, 10% of it goes down. And also, given that the proposed contractors' bids are coming in underestimated costs, new project costs have already been reduced over $500,000. And ideally, what I'm asking is that the city council agree with my logic and rationale and reduce my assessment to the 10% that I proposed and conclude this matter. However, I'm willing to consider alternative economic models that the city may want to consider, and just ask that I be able to participate in a process, and I'm given the same level of explanation as I have attempted to provide to the city with my emails. I understand that the resolutions before you tonight are not impacted by your decision or comments regarding my special assessment situation, but I would hope that you provide your thoughts regarding this request tonight and not defer it to a later date. I also ask you to consider the same for the rest of our neighbors, given their particular situations. So as Brad Burgie, it's the exact same vote, original member. Eric has asked for a 25% reduction, because he moved in in 2005, little different situation. So that's what we're asking for. And lastly, I don't intend the other neighbors to pick up what I'm asking not to pay. That would be unfair to them. Unfortunately, the only one left to pick up that extra is the city. But, you know, the past city council may not have been as astute as you guys. Past city staff may not have been paying as close attention to what happened, but it's not on us. So, thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bourbon. We've got a couple of late ads. Mike and Kathy Falco.
Good evening. Thanks for giving us a moment. I'm Mike Falco. This is my wife Kathy Falco. Our home is at 4101 Irish Court North. And we mainly just wanted to express our appreciation for the road project. Our road has long suffered from drainage problems, as well as, you know, big gouges and the like. We've been talking for years about when we would get a road replacement. So, we're actually glad that this is the year we're being considered and wanted to express our support for that. We actually wish that water extension would have been realistic, but for whatever reason, I guess that's not part of the project. So, again, we just wanted to express our support for the renovation of our street.
Thank you. Brooke Duer.
Hi, I'm Brooke Duer, 4870 Jerome Avenue North. I also own a house on Jane Road North, too. Want to say thanks for looking at the road situation. The previous, I live in the Teal Pass Estates part, and 58th Street was done several years ago. And the council and the engineer back then worked with me to deal with the observation I had near the Whipple Tree Farm, which the flooding coming off of that was absolutely massive. And we did, you guys did a really good job of fixing that, and it's all done. The one thing I've noticed, I walk my dog religiously every night around my whole entire neighborhood, and much of the roads were already done, what, six years ago, in our area, 53rd Street to 58th Street. The one thing I'm noticing, and it's part of my job where I work, is when I look for defects and things, because I'm in quality, I always try to figure out what is causing something to go wrong. And I'm noticing in our area, the roads that are only five or six years old have got massive amounts of cracks in the top coat. And that makes me concerned, because I think, well, what's going on? Because water's going to get in there, and that's going to, going to cause a problem. So, I think back to, my brother lives on a road in upstate New York. Same number approximately of freeze-thaw cycles that we have here. The road is 75 years old. Log trucks from my brother's business come in there. Heavy dump trucks and stuff go up the road, you know, beyond my brother. And every, I think it's about every 10 years, they seal coat it. But the road is 75 years old, no curbs, and holding up just fine. So I just sort of look at the roads and we hear the discussions about how often we're replacing our roads. And here's an area that is, you know, done differently, and I think maybe we should be looking at that. I do know that in New York, the top coat is minimum of four inches, and oftentimes, there's the porous layer below that of five or six inches. They use, they also use granite for curbs, because granite is readily available. And it's very nice, but very rough on trucks. But I would just encourage people to, especially the engineers, to look at the situation with our hard coat, this top coat cracking, which is going to let water in, which is going to cause it to start to break down. And in the road in our area that was just done is showing a huge amount of cracks. Now, we do, you do come around to seal those up, but I just look at that and think, okay, it's five or six years old. I'm already seeing signs of where, you know, we're probably not going to get the life. And we always, I know we go by MINDOT standards, but maybe we may not want to be listening to MINDOT. Maybe we should be talking to other people, other, you know, other states, just to see what they're doing differently. Because 75 years for the road my brother lives on is pretty darn impressive. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I think that is everyone. With that, I'll entertain a motion to take us out of the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Holtz and Dragasich to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at 7:49. All right. So... Are there any questions for staff before any sort of, not that we can't ask questions once a motion is made? I guess I can entertain a motion on this item?
Yeah, one quick question.
What's the process for if the council did wanna do some sort of alternative assessment? Is that something that we need to decide on tonight? Is that something that we can, what's the process on that, I guess is the question? Any counsel on that?
So, the, the council has broad discretion to, to change the, the assessment amounts. That would not be tonight, that would be at the assessment hearing, or, or before the assessment hearing. So long as it's uniform on the class of properties, the council has broad discretion.
Thank you.
And I guess there's one more, kinda to clarify. I, I think it might still be worthwhile having the conversation about the, with the, the concrete curbs, if possibly going to, I, I know City Works probably won't like this much, but going to more of like the, the flat curb, if, if, you know, if that does fit better with the area versus the four-inch height, you know, is, is a compromise to keep it a little bit less of the more newly, newly developed Lake Elmo look versus what they're a little bit more used to with where they live right now. So, is that something, again, if we're gonna have that conversation, can we change that down the road? Or is that tonight, we need to modify that in?
So I, the, the project was bid with the style of curb that I described earlier, the, the high-back B, four-inch-high, eighteen-inch gutter pan. And if we did change the type of curb, there'd be a change order.
And I believe when we've done it in the past, it dropped, when we went? No, opposite?
Nope, not necessarily, it typically is gonna be more, because they're changing out and bringing in something new.
Sorry, for the, the elevated versus the flat?
Oh.
The material itself would be cheaper, change order maybe would add to it, or my, I thought when we previously had made that change, that did bring the price down, actually.
Yeah, not, it's, it's not necessarily.
Okay.
You know. I, I don't think there'd be a huge change in price, but I would, I wouldn't recommend changing it at this point for that pri, for, for that reason, you know. But also, just that the, the, the B-style curb fits with the neighborhood. Right now, there is a small curb with, with, in many areas with the, by bituminous edging. So, all of a sudden, removing that curb, now you've, you've, you're gonna create drainage problems down the road, because there's nothing to contain the drainage in the street, it runs off the crown, and it's gonna be running into driveways, it's gonna be running into yards, it's gonna be washing out the edge, and, and it's just gonna create a, you know, situation where, for maintenance, plows and, and vehicles are getting into boulevards and, you know.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Just maybe to help with that question, do we know the curb style that's on Fifty-seventh prior to getting to the area that's slated to be redone?
Well, we can, if you give me one second, Mr. Mayor, we can...
Just trying to jump into it, I know that Fifty-seventh, there's... Right here. Yeah, it's concrete, I'm just, I don't know if that's that B-six, it, it looks like it's a shorter, it's a smaller elevated curb.
Isn't it, isn't it Fifty-Fifth Street, though?
Right. I'm just getting a comparison of, of what it would be to...
Yeah.
To something that's already in place on Fifty-seventh.
For sure.
So I'm, I'm looking at the street view on Fifty-seventh Street from this past August, that was reconstructed prebi, in previous years, and it's a B-style curb.
Yeah, is that, that's just B, is it B-four?
I believe it's B-four.
Yeah, it looks pretty short. Okay.
Clarifying question on that, because it, on that section, so east of Julip, it, it does look like it's the B-four. And for that west of Julip on Fifty-seventh, the proposal was to have it be the B-six, or B-five? Or would it still be for a four-inch?
It was B, B-four uniformly through the...
So it would, it'd match, okay. We weren't going with the, the higher ones that we have elsewhere.
Okay.
Yes.
A question for the engineer. Nate, we heard some discussion about, on the Fifty-seventh Street, the original road was constructed in nineteen ninety-three, and we rebuilt it in two thousand and ten. In nineteen ninety-three, was that the street that was put in by the developer, or was that street put in by the city, or do we know?
Uh, Councilmember Dragasic, that was the original build by the developer.
So we don't have any basic information on the R-value of the soils at the time, or?
No.
Any information we could look back and say, was it properly built or not? We've heard the term MINDOT standards tossed around, mean they use the standard, you know, bituminous thickness, but we don't know actually how well the road is constructed, because of soils information, all that engineering technical stuff you would use to design a road was, was done by somebody else, and not, you know, not necessarily by the city.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Dragasic, absolutely, you're, you're right. The road was built by others, they had a, an engineered plan. However, at, at that time, I don't know what, what the situation was in Lake Elmo for a, a city engineer, engineering department. A lot of times, developments, it's not just unique to Lake Elmo, but when, when the suburban areas in the East Metro were subdividing in the late eighties and early nineties, they've all kind of run into a similar situation like this.
So we have no idea what the design life of that street was at that time, other than it failed by two thousand and ten?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Sorry, we're, we're in discussion, so we had a moment to speak, or time to present that earlier. Not that we can't take a look at it later. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three-eight, ordering the improvements, accepting bids, and awarding a contract to Valley Paving Inc. for the bid amount of one million, four eighty-five, four thirty-six, and fifty cents for the twenty-twenty-five street and utility improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Anyone? There's no discussion, I'll call the question.
Well, I mean, I, I can start, number one. We have a lot of success with getting feedback from this neck of the woods. We've had many items that have come up, so the CUP request for a landscaping business nearby, the CUP request for the home that was to be going in on Keats, and this. And credit to the many who have sent in feedback and who attended. And I apologize, I haven't replied to a lot of emails, that's on me. And normally I do, I will blame soccer, soccer, softball, and soccer. But I just wanna start off by saying that, like, we do read your emails, I failed to reply, and that's on me. This is int, I wasn't here for the last meeting, and so this was, it was interesting watching that one and now, getting this information today, because there are some unique circumstances with this. Most of the street utilities that come before us, we, we get, you know, similar questions. There's city regulations, there's our neighborhood, and they, they may not perfectly mix. And that, you're not alone, that happens in, in most neighborhoods, because no neighborhood is the same. That's part of what makes Lake Elmo fantastic, is none of our neighbors, neighborhoods are the same, they're all unique. The modern ones are unique, the ones that have quarter acres are unique, the ones that have three to five acres are unique. I, I will say, in terms of curb and gutter, I, in terms of investment, when the city overall is paying seventy percent, which is myself, Matt, all of you on the seventy percent, I will, ten times out of ten, make a choice to say that the best product should be used, which is concrete. With that said, I fully get, it may not be what visually is wanted, that is entirely true. But in terms of that investment piece, in terms of what we know should last longer, whether it does or doesn't, we can't say for certain every single time, we know for a fact there have been failures here, we don't know why. But we also know that for a fact, concrete will last longer, I will ten times out of ten vote for that. In, in terms of the parking signs, I, again, we're, that's not part of this thing tonight, but I think that's, I don't recall seeing in the images if it's the south or north side, but I think we can obviously have that discussion moving forward. But it sounds like that it might be in conflict as to which one it is, but we've, we've had that discussion with other neighborhoods, and we have made changes in specific circumstances, so that has happened. That's something we can definitely, as this moves forward, continue with that. In terms of assessment change, I, I do not support that in, at all. It's not that there's no policy for it, there isn't. But I don't think it's also a precedent that I would wanna make on behalf of the city and all of our taxpayers, when in this situation, yeah, the road hasn't lasted as long as it likely should have. That's not your fault, it's also not the city's fault, it's also not anyone's that we know's fault. It might have been from five years in a row of horrific rains. It might have been flawed material, it might have been a flawed, we don't know. And we are not in a position to say, in this situation, we are going to reduce based upon when someone moved in. I'm sorry, that, that is not a sustainable solution that I would be wanting to make as a precedent that then can be afforded. And I should note, what happens oftentimes when someone moves in, if there are assessments remaining on that house, oftentimes the buyer pays off those assessments. So if there's three or four years remaining of assessments, that buyer pays it as part of their mortgage. So that, that's, I, it's just not a, it's a creative idea. We are here to listen to ideas, you provide ideas, I don't, I, that's not one I can go forward with. I do appreciate that the curb and gutter is four inches, because there are taller options. In this case, this does match up with what was already there at Fifty-seventh, so I do appreciate that. But I, I can't go away from what is the best product available for trying to get the best longevity out there.
Councilmember Dragasic?
You know, I know we're not here to talk about the assessments this evening, and my comment about the nineteen ninety-three project is only because I do have, I do have an understanding of the frustration of the residents having the street rebuilt in two thousand and ten, and now fifteen years later being forced, you know, with an assessment to replace the street, which should have had a longer life. I'm trying to, in my mind, knowing generally how the development process works, that, yeah, we always had a plans for the streets that were submitted, but we don't design them, they're designed by the developer. And, you know, as you know, when you do a street, there's a lot more science to it than just how many inches of bituminous you have in base. Not gonna get into a full discussion, but I do, I do share the residents' concern that the street didn't give them the life that they should have. I'm not in agreement that there was fifty years of life, but I think we have an issue where the life is shorter than what we would have expected it to be in most reasonable situations, and we can look at that when we get to the assessment portion. With regard to the parking signs, I think there should be some flexibility, my only concern would be, we have city ordinance to specify where the signs have to be to enforce them. So you have to look at what is the enforceability, if you don't have the signs in the right places, can you give someone a ticket who's parked illegally? And that would be my only concern, but I think we should be able to work with the neighborhood and try and come up with something that meets our regulations, and to the best we can satisfy their concerns. Because I'm sympathetic to, you know, we all have a place where, where we've been living for a long time, we call it home, and it's convenient, and we like the way it looks, and we make a change that affects the aesthetics, we wanna work with you on that. I will work with you on that, as one city council member, I'm only one vote, but I'm sympathetic to your concerns. And so, I think, you know, repairing the streets is, is, is always in our best interest to have good streets if we let them go too far. My hometown is Chisholm, I go up there to visit, and the streets are so bad, I, there's no, there's not enough money in the state of Minnesota to fix all the streets there, I'm sorry, you, you ruin your car driving down them. At one time, I was the mayor of Chisholm, I would never let that happen if I was still there. But every community has to deal with that on their own. And what I like about Lake Elmo is we have a street program. I moved into the Royal Club, and after five years, we had a street seal coat it, which is good practice, so that we don't have water going in the cracks. And I wasn't on the council at the time, I, you know, saw the improvement, I said, wow, this is fantastic, we have a city who cares about its streets and wants to maintain them. We have a CIP that has a lot of streets in them to make sure that we don't find ourselves in that position where everything is bad. And now you got a problem where you're tripling taxes to pay for streets, because you don't know what to do. So I think, as a councilman, I'm sympathetic to all your concerns, I wanna find something that's fair to all of the residents and fair to you, in some way that's reasonable, we can talk about that when we get to the assessment hearing. I just didn't want you to think my comment about the original build was, was anything negative towards you. I'm just trying to, that's my understanding of how development works, and having spent forty years in government, I think I have a pretty good idea, but I wanted to make sure how it worked here, because I've only been here five years. So, I think we have a basis for moving forward and coming to some agreement as, as, you know, citizens and council.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add to that, you know, I think both of those comments, I, I do very much agree with. You know, as much as I'd like to build a, see a little bit of compromise and with what, with some of the requests, you know, just, I think like what Councilmember Holtz was saying, when we look at it from the stance of what the lifespan is gonna be with the curb and gutter, or with the concrete curb, it's just, I can't vote against that, that's just unfair to the other seventy percent. And then I'll just add, as far as with the, the signage, I am very open, and I, I really would like to see some more compromise on that. I, I know that might be a challenge with some of the ordinances like what was just brought up, but I really feel like that is an area where we can at least work with the residents to make some compromise and, and help meet some of their requests as well.
Yeah, and I agree with all the comments here, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight to express their concerns. With the parking signs, I completely, I mean, in lockstep with everybody here about having some compromise around that, being able to move it. But again, I just wanna say that I appreciate everybody's comments today, and they're, they're heard, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. What can I say, I just put the, the one thing I always, people wanna know what curb and gutter does. So the, the, the layman in me says, think about a piece of bread and the crust around the bed, right? If you don't have the crust, the bread can kind of fall apart. So with the crust, it just helps it hold together a little bit, that, just, that's the way I kind of lay that out a little bit. I think the city has in past projects, uh... Fields of St. Croix, we did work with the neighborhood on the placement of no parking signs. And I know that people that have lived here a long time, that haven't had parking signs, and that's a new thing, it's a policy. Chief Kales does a very good job at looking at our roadways and coming up with reasonable ways to make sure that if, if there is a safety event that they need to attend to with the trucks, that the width of the roadway will allow those vehicles to turn without potentially jamming, damaging a vehicle that's parked on the side. So, understand it's, you know, that policy's in place, and it, and it will affect some older parts of Lake Elmo as the work comes along. And it's not just a willy-nilly policy that we're gonna put no parking signs on there, but we do wanna make sure that, you know, people have access to their driveways well and easy enough. And we understand that, that people have parties, or graduation parties, or whatnot, and that we do have a vehicle, if you're gonna have a lot of parking on, say, a weekend or something, it's not a cost for a permit, you call into the city, get a little tag for the no parking signs, and it's, it's covered for that time. And then, and then Chief Kales will get the notice that there's gonna be parking there this weekend, so they'll be aware of that. The other thing is, some of these roads in Lake Elmo are performing well, the normal everyday traffic on it, your passenger vehicle, your pickup, really does minimal damage. If anything, the damage is coming from overweight vehicles such as garbage trucks. And some neighborhoods see, you know, eight in a day, four with trash and four with recycling, depending on who's using what service. But the, the, the high, the city engineer used the word moisture, and I've said it before, but my professor in college said... worst things, three worst things for pavement is water, water, and water. So as much as we can do to make sure that that water sheds into a drainage system to help support the roadway, so the subgrate, you don't create a bathtub and exacerbate that freeze-thaw system. One thing that I'm pretty proud of that the city council did previous, a couple of years ago, was put in a pavement management plan for the city, which we had none before. So taking a look at our roadways and rating them and making sure that we are doing preventative maintenance on them to help extend the life, because all of our, all of our taxes go into making sure that the infrastructure for a city is up to date. Whether that was done or not previously, I can't speak to that, but we, it's in place now and should be there moving forward. I really do appreciate all the people that came to speak on this project. It shows the interest and the care of your area and your home, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you. I do want to speak to Mr. Doerr of Find Out This Road in New York, just because I'm interested about it. And I would like us to take a look at some roadways that he pointed out with some large cracking that had been done five or six years ago and see what's going on there. So I appreciate that information, sir. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into a material testing contract for the project construction phase services and then not to exceed amount of thirty thousand for the twenty twenty-five street utility improvements.
We have a motion in a second for the city administrator to enter in material testing contract. I'm just going to call the question on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is accept bids and award contract bids for Old Village Garden improvements.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Bringing back tonight, the Old Village Garden Improvement Project. We had worked with the community group, Connect Lake Elmo, and Rotary Club and the architect on Main Street. We had an open house that was held, an open house that was held at the library, April third. We gained community feedback and also met with the Washington County engineers about the right-of-way restrictions with trees and received their recommendations. We can do a presentation and then stand for more questions.
Mayor and members of the council, Sarah Evenson, City of Lake Elmo landscape architect. Happy to be in front of you all again, as we've done some additional work on this project since the last time I was here. So I'll give you a little overview of our purpose of the project, where we're at now with the species selection, the re-quote of the garden project, and then motion. So just to remind you all, back in September, Connect Lake Elmo had recommended a beautification project for the Old Village Gardens. And following up on that, we had prepared a set of plans and quoted them out and were directed to go ahead and re-engage with Connect Lake Elmo and see if we could get some additional community engagement and get some feedback on what people's preferences were for that planting and what they wanted to see. So we worked with Connect Lake Elmo, put together a series of boards and advertised for an open house that was held at the library here. And we got some feedback about people's preferences on the planting plans and just, you know, inform them about the project in general. It's always good to have engagement when things are going to be changing in people's backyards or rather front, sort of, Main Street. So we want to update and refresh these planting beds, make them more inviting, ensure that they are properly designed so that they look neat and they look welcoming. And they're going to sort of last in good standing a bit longer than the last go-around. So what we ended up doing was we took three initial planting schemes that were developed in conjunction with Stephen Masti, who's a local landscape architect, and we presented those to the general public at the open house on April third. It was a very well-attended event. As far as open houses go, we had over two dozen people. And we also took some feedback from business owners who weren't able to attend that was passed on to us as well. So what we heard, first and foremost, people are really excited to see that these gardens are being revisited and some care is being taken into redesigning them. A lot of the people that we spoke with at one time or another had volunteered to maintain the old gardens. And so emphasizing a commitment to maintenance was really a big deal for them, and they were happy to hear that that will be emphasized moving forward. Overall, planting scheme-wise, people tended to gravitate more towards the long sort of seasons of bloom with a variety of blooms, more of the pollinator-friendly planting scheme. And so based on that and in conjunction with Stephen Masti, who, again, well-respected landscape designer, landscape architect, we revised the planting plans to fold in some of his techniques and carry forward that spread of blooms throughout the seasons. So we made a couple tweaks. Business owners had expressed that they really liked the tulips that weren't originally in this plan. It was daffodils originally, so we swapped those out. We're doing a matrix planting now, which is kind of like offsets of grasses with flowers tucked in, so you'll see pops of color throughout the season. We followed spacing recommendations that were also provided by Stephen. And so overall, we, I feel like we melded the public preference, based the design on one of his original schemes, and just made a couple of tweaks in order to sort of bring it all together. Overall, the planting palette is largely native, easily maintainable, very drought tolerant, salt and pollution resistant. And it also meets height guidelines that were recommended by the Washington County engineers. Previous planting had incorporated some taller grasses, and that's part of what contributed to the messy look, so we won't be seeing that here. All of these species are about two feet with some seed heads up to three, but sightlines are maintained and it should be overall a much neater approach. There are also trees, you'll note, that we were able to incorporate this time around. And so I'll talk a little bit about that. So we talked again to the Washington County engineers. They talked about how there were a couple of locations where trees weren't incorporated along the roadway, probably due to budget. And that the main sort of consideration on their part was that we wanted to maintain pruning heights of six feet or higher so that we can maintain sightlines. We got survey information and didn't find any major utility conflicts in two separate locations where they hadn't originally installed planting beds for the, for trees. So there's two locations, and I'm going to mouse over them right here, here by the, just north of the library and then by the library. And so in those two spots, we feel like as part of a future project, we could take out some hardscape and put in enough soil volume to successfully accommodate trees, if you guys thought that that was something of interest. There's also three locations where there are smaller ornamental trees planted that actually don't meet the pruning guidelines that were requested by the county engineers. So we would also recommend if we did a future tree planting project that those species be pulled out and then replaced with trees that are going to grow large enough that we can prune them up. There's also been some pruning on the west side of the road of the smaller crab apples that needs to be remedied. And so we would like to do some follow-up pruning on that side of the road as well. But as part of the project for this year, we have three trees that we feel like we could reasonably put in, given the soil volumes that exist. One is a smaller gladiator crab apple to match the other crab apples on the west side of Lake Elmo Avenue, right on the corner of Thirty-Fourth Street. Across the street from that, we have room for an Armstrong red maple, which is columnar and can be pruned up, so it's not going to impact the sidewalk or people walking, but it will add a pop of fall color. And then on the north side of the project site along Thirty-Six, there are two planting beds that we can expand in conjunction with the property owner there, which is the church, who has okayed this. We can expand those planting beds and provide an additional tree as well. They have some very successful swamp white oaks growing in that area. So we had originally planned for a swamp white oak, but received some feedback in the community engagement that some of the acorns can be annoying, and so we swapped out that for a sort of non-fruting variety. So it's a little bit about what's going in this year and then a little bit about what could be a potential future project to incorporate additional shade trees.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Question. With the three that are existing that are smaller ornamental and maybe need to be pulled, do you know why, if it's based upon sightlines, why were they put there to begin with?
So my understanding is that they were replacement trees, because the trees that had been installed there had died. And maybe it was about what could be procured at the time.
Yes. So Public Works did replace a couple of those trees here in the last year or two. And the trees that we selected were trees that our last architect selected with council based on hardiness and such, not specific for this exact location, but for our other medians and roadways. So that's what was planted and replaced.
Good with salt and good for other things.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, they could be relocated. They're not in bad condition. It was part of the feedback that we received as part of the engagement that these species would be better somewhere else, and that shade trees would be preferred along this roadway.
Yeah, so with our extensive conversation about roadways today, has there been any discussion around the root systems with these trees being put in, cracking roads, sidewalks, parking lots, things like that?
Yeah. So the two new tree locations, my recommendation for putting those in would be to use structural soils. So instead of just taking out, the rest of the trees are planted in a very narrow boulevard section and then covered with permeable pavers. I think it's roughly ninety square feet or, I would have to look at the drawings, but it's not a huge amount of soil volume that they have.
Sure.
The new ones, if we were to do it ideally, I would recommend taking out a portion of the existing sidewalk, putting in structural soils beneath that and then repaving that. We would include a permeable paver section along the roadway to match the rest of the streetscape. So after it's all said and done, it would look the same and of the same piece. But there would actually be more accessible soil volume for those trees to take root in, and that really is what helps prevent cracking of sidewalks and roadways.
Sure.
Because if you give them the space, they'll go there. Otherwise, if they're going to be hardy and survive, they have to take that space somehow. And that's when you get sort of that upheaval.
So have you seen that process be successful in the past?
Yeah. Structural soils are more expensive, but definitely worthwhile. They give trees a better shot at actually achieving more of a mature canopy than traditional street trees, which my city's arborist usually refers to their planting as street coffins. So I like to try to avoid that where possible.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right. So we took the revised plans and we sent them out for quotes to three separate potential contractors, Margolis, Hoffman McNamara, and Pioneer. All three of these firms do work within Lake Elmo, and we have experience with all of them through our work with development plan reviews and the tree warranty reviews. Margolis came in the highest for install costs. Pioneer came in middle range, and then Hoffman McNamara came in the lowest. We also asked for quotes for maintenance, knowing that that's going to be a priority moving forward after the year warranty is up. And that was kind of interesting, because Margolis came in the lowest, Hoffman and McNamara came in the highest, and Pioneer came in middle again. So what we ended up doing was extrapolating that out. So even after a year or even after four years, if you did hire the same firm for both maintenance and installation, Hoffman and McNamara did come in the most affordable. And our assumption for that was three weeding, cutting, and cleanup visits per year and then four watering visits annually, understanding that you might want to get them out for watering more frequently during drought years. We just can't predict. So the recommendation in front of you all relates to the hiring of Hoffman and McNamara based on their quote amount. Open it up for questions.
Questions? I don't have any. You're speaking about something I don't know a lot about, and it looks great.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Which part?
Both. I know it's hard for you to believe.
I know Councilmember Holtz always has something to ask. I'd put you on the spot.
No, actually, so, yes. So if those three are then taken out, you said they're healthy and they could be removed. I mean, obviously, we took, you all took down hundreds of trees, but is there a low-hanging fruit where that specific type of ornamental plays, especially on, maybe in one of our parks or something, where there'd be an easy fit for Public Works?
We'll definitely find a good spot.
All right. Solid. Because that's a, honestly, because those are several years old now, so that's value gained right there. They're already growing and healthy, so, good to know. Motion to approve the Old Village Garden Improvement Plans as proposed by HKGI and contract with Hoffman and McNamara for removal and installation in twenty twenty-five and to contract out professional annual maintenance in future years for the Old Village Gardens along Lake Elmo Ave, not to exceed fifty thousand two hundred and ninety in twenty twenty-five.
Support.
So discussion. I have, it's kind of a question. Was, question for Councilmember. Were you able to attend the open house as a business owner on Village?
I didn't make the open house, but I know a lot of the businesses in the area made it there. And I know they really appreciate it. I don't mean to hijack your discussion here, but I I jump into it right away. I'm just saying I really do appreciate all the effort that Marty and Sarah have put in. I know Stephen, which I, he's a, his business is right next to mine, and I know he's very passionate about this and has provided a lot of information, which is very helpful and just exciting to see the community. Connect Lake Elmo, obviously being part of it. And then, you know, when we did, or when they did the engagement with the community, getting a lot of, you know, a couple dozen.
Yeah.
That's, that's very good, you know.
It's very good, especially for like a smaller project.
Yeah.
It's not like a year-long engagement process. I mean, I was really impressed.
Which is great to see. So I just think overall, I mean, I know we kind of had the little hiccup at first where we said, hey, you know, we'd like to see a little bit more of that, and I really appreciate everything that was done after that point to bring the community in. And I know it's challenging with multiple parties being involved and with their ideas. And so I know that's challenging, but I really appreciate the effort and just keep pushing forward and making this a reality. You know, obviously, as a citizen, I'm really excited about this. You know, we walk down there with our kids all the time. There's lots of new shops there, so it's just going to make it much more enjoyable. As a business on Main Street, it's great to see this as well. So I just think overall, I'm really excited about it. Sorry to hijack your discussion.
No, I wanted your input, and that's really kind of what I wanted to hear. I'm excited for something that's been a blight in the Old Village for some time to actually look attractive after a while of not really being what it was meant to be, so.
Sorry.
Go ahead and hijack.
I like that we planned the maintenance as well. I know that was kind of the, it seems like the downfall of the previous effort with this. I really like seeing that. I don't know if that was the idea of like every single year, they're going to continue coming out with that maintenance.
You know, the maintenance funding hasn't been authorized yet, but what this, the fifty thousand two ninety, will cover, you know, the warranty period, which typically lasts a full year.
Yeah.
So then after that, you So then after that, you would authorize.
And so I guess my, my just my one comment on that is I'd really like to hopefully continue to work with Connect Lake Elmo, especially like with businesses in that area to try to take part in helping out however the businesses can. To be quite honest, that was actually one of my big concerns going into this in the first place is I almost kind of felt like it was something more that the businesses should have been taking care of versus the city possibly. So I think at least moving forward, I'd really like to see the businesses that are on that street really continue to be involved with maintaining it and making sure that, you know, it continues to be as nice as it's gonna look here in year one. And I know, last thing. I know there was, I heard there was some conversation about, I don't know how this could work with it, but maybe just conversations to have as far as some like sponsorship opportunities if people want to pay for a planting. Just again, to make it a little more of a community event, to help pay for it a little bit. And it's just kind of a cool way, you know, I think when I had the conversation with Steven, it was around poppies that has has something to, and I apologize, I don't know this, but it has something to do with veterans. And so they were saying as far as like, you know, if you wanted to sponsor a poppy, it'd just be a cool way of, you know, saying, hey, like, you know, this was part of our history, a family member, somebody who served in the military. If we could do something like that, just as we're kind of moving along, I think that'd be a cool thing to look into.
Is there, and I'm not, sorry, I don't know this, but is there a veterans park within Lake Elmo?
The VFW field is right there.
We have a
There's a plaque over there.
There's a plaque and a flagpole on.
Small planting under it.
Yeah.
That sounds like an incredible idea.
But just something like that. And that was Connect Lake Elmo, and Steven had thought of that, and I just thought that'd be a really great, if it's possible to do as we're moving forward, to keep the community involved with.
Yeah, I think it was a really good opportunity for us to connect with, connect Lake Elmo. And just to, we had talked about, you know, like using it as a relationship, as a precedent, sort of like able to, because they're great at engaging the community, and I think that's a great resource to have. And so for landscape-based projects moving forward, I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Great. Thank you.
You're good?
I'm done.
You're good.
Promise.
You're prom, all right. The only original thought I would have to add on to that, and I fully agree with, that is this project, while it is small, it's also impactful. This is a prime corridor in the Old Village, and I think it's also an example of a time when government is able to coordinate. And I appreciate the work, in this case, Marty and Sarah, but also with Lake, with Connect Lake Elmo and with the business owners. That coordination doesn't always happen. It doesn't, especially when it comes time to, in this case, we're expending tax dollars, but it's based upon kind of a joint venture. Like, we didn't create a joint venture contract or anything, but it was based upon a process that could have easily been said no, or frustrations mount, or something happens. And so credit to all those involved. I think Connect Lake Elmo is an example of why things, I think the last several years have been growing in certain ways in terms of vitality and having those opportunities to have a sense of community, especially in our downtown. And this is then something that happens when you do those things. And so credit to all those who are involved. And yeah, it's a small project, but it will have a meaningful impact. And I look forward to honestly, other examples where these opportunities exist. This is one example. It involves landscaping in this specific area. But I have no doubt there will be other opportunities, such as a sports complex. Just throwing that out there.
All right. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Old Village Garden Improvement Plans as proposed by HKGI, City's Landscape Architect, and contract Hoffman McNamara for removal and installation in twenty twenty-five, and to contract out professional annual maintenance into future years for the Old Village Gardens along Lake Elmo Avenue, not to exceed fifty thousand two hundred ninety dollars in twenty twenty-five. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. So Marty, you could stay up there, right?
Yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is sidewalks, snow removal ordinance update.
All right, guys. You might get another preview of this. I'll try to queue it up for you, Marty.
Sure.
Might need Julie's help.
Julie, do you mind?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. We are also bringing back the snow removal on the trail ordinance as discussed in an earlier council meeting, March eleventh. Council reviewed the request for snow removal on trails once again and had concluded that possibly clearing some of the trails in streets without sidewalks on them might increase the connectivity of the walkability of the city. Council's direction was for staff to go back, relook at the ordinance, include some definitions in sidewalks and trails, and then determine what trails might be included in this ordinance change. I did not use the new.
The new and improved?
No.
That'll be the last.
It's also a little hard to look at snow right now.
So Marty, if you go hit that little icon that next to the, where it says fifty-nine percent, just to the left of that, down, go down, go to the, go to your right now, keep going, go back. Oh, right there, hit that.
I never knew that was there.
What does that do?
There you go.
All right.
If it was a snowplow, you'd know what to do.
All right.
You knew that?
And Julie, how does it forward?
Here's the arrows on the.
Let's hit the arrow button.
Have I never seen that button there before?
I've never seen that.
Is that new?
No.
No, never looked. I haven't used that either.
Oh, boy.
There's two options up top. I never had to get to the third.
Why is there a third one down there?
That's the only one I've ever.
Really? It must be. Oh, that's funny.
I couldn't even tell you the way to put it in presentation. So sorry, I didn't have this included in pocket for you to look at. Got a chance to review here later and sooner. We had, some of the, some of the trails that would be affected would be a section on Fiftieth Street. Cleaning would be pretty much done by abutting property owners. I didn't see any property that city-owned, where Public Works would be maintaining that trail. So we have Fiftieth Street, Eastern Village, we have Pilot Park. So there's a section of trail there without a sidewalk on the opposing side. Farms of Lake Elmo, there's a couple of sections of trail there without sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. Lake Elmo Avenue. This is from Stillwater, kind of on the Old Village, along the school. Cleared by HOA, by Public Works, and some commercial property along with some residents. Hidden Meadows, this is in the north part of the city. There's a large section of trail that would be abutting the church property on the south. Public Works has a couple of outlots for stormwater that we would be responsible to clear, and then along with a number of residents that would have some clearing responsibility. Hudson Boulevard, this trail is not quite finished yet, but we expect it to be soon. Public Works has a responsibility for some of the, some of these sections of the trail. Numerous businesses, open development land, and then some HOA property. So the multiple people responsible for clearing that. Thirtieth Street, we have, this is kind of by Reed Park, east of. Residents will be responsible, HOA is responsible, and then Public Works has some responsibility as well. Royal Gulf, Nick will be responsible for the majority of this. We, there's a, there's a number of areas here. Public Works would have responsibility for two. HOA has a, would be responsible for some, along with some of the HOA. Sanctuary, there's two sections of trail without sidewalk on them. Same thing, HOA, Public Works, and a few residents would have some responsibility. Field of St. Croix, this general area along Stillwater Way, Stillwater Boulevard. There's not much for sidewalk in these areas, but there is trails in the road right of way. And that's key as to how I wrote up our planning department. And I wrote up the ordinance changes. These trails would, you know, abut the road in the road right of way. So there's a number of areas here that would need to be cleared. Wildflower has a section, and that is it. Like I said, if you got a chance to read the ordinance change, it would affect the trails in a road right of way only. So if a, if a trail sets back in an outlaw, out of the road right of way, it's not, wouldn't be included in this. Can I stand for questions?
Councilmember Holt? Number one, thank you for the visuals. And if we vote for this, what do you think would be a good way to help communicate the changes then? Because this is, I mean, it's a hodgepodge of a spot here, a spot there. And obviously, from GIS, we know, but are we thinking maybe a mailer and a couple of other things? Because it
Right.
I assume we also would need multiple instances to reinforce, because this will be a pretty substantial change for random property owner here, Andy Chase along County fourteen. Obviously, a city for Eastern Village along the park, but it's, it's so random in that case.
Right. So Kathy, you know, the, she's our expert with sharing information. So I mean, we'll definitely, I recommend even before it gets too close to fall, start sharing that information, maybe with property owners directly. The church, you know, there's, there's a couple of big outlots or big land developers that are gonna have some responsibilities that they probably want to budget for. You know, these people aren't going to go out and shovel these things. So, you know, by sharing that information, maybe that'll help them plan for winter with a budget and a contractor to kind of help them out. So, yeah, we do have a few ideas that we're definitely going to, I'd like to push it out before we get too close to fall.
I think it's a good point. One thing we could work with too are the homeowners associations, because they have their meetings with the residents, could advise them. And in some cases, like in our area, we do, our HOA plows a lot of the trails that are, use as sidewalks where there aren't residents. Probably also because we're the abutting property owner. But I mean, I think the HOAs could be helpful in getting that message out.
Yeah, we have a good list of HOA contacts, so that might be a great source just to send every HOA.
Have some of the property owners like that you mentioned where, you know, with the farmland, where they'd be clearing a lot of trail, have they been contacted prior to tonight's meeting by chance?
No, nothing. Right, and there are a few sections, Keats Avenue, if we look back at that. South of the Park Preserve, there's trail on both sides of Keats and the county road right of way. Miller has a big pit, and I'm only guessing, but I'm sure that's all of, it's gonna be several thousand feet of trail on his side. The opposite side abuts residential properties. So, you know, I guess we could hope that the HOA would maybe be involved in clearing that, but.
Councilmember Holt? So thank you for that example. So in the case of Keats, south of Tenth, because it's county and it's in the county right of way.
So county doesn't clear any trails. So if, how, we typically maintain, if there's something the city wants maintained in the right of way, such as a trail, we would probably be the ones involved. I know, I can't think of right now what we've done, but there's situations where we, if, that I know we've been involved with, where we've completed maintenance on something that we wanted to see maintained.
Can we legislate this, being as it's not our right of way?
Well, the, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Nate or Marty, but when the, there is a project on a county road, they don't automatically put in a trail. They put in a trail at the request of the city, and it's typically the city's hundred percent cost for that trail in the right of way. And then the assumption of that trail is taken on by the city, I believe.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the case for every situation. I think there was some cost sharing on some. When we seal coded, we did not include either of these trails.
You're talking about Keats?
On Keats, correct. We looked back and had legal review some of the agreements, and maintenance on those particular trails, the asphalt, nodding the city's responsibility.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say that every trail in the right of way is maybe the same.
All right. Interesting. Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna make a motion to include sidewalk definition ordinance one dash oh eight dash zero one zero and not include the trail snow removal language, as outlined to be included in the sidewalk snow removal ordinance nine dot one six dot one two zero.
The motion is to include sidewalk definition on the.
Update that, yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to include a sidewalk definition in ordinance one zero eight zero one zero. Discussion. Councilmember Hurt?
I'm just a little concerned at this point. Well, one, I'm concerned in general just because of the the hodgepodge-ness is, was used as kind of the, for these areas that would need to be cleared. I think that's gonna be challenging in of itself. I think it's gonna be challenging to enforce this. And then I think the other thing, at least for right now, and maybe even if this just has to get put on hold, if everybody else really wants this, at a bare minimum, I'd like to see this just get pushed so we could communicate a little bit probably more with the residents, especially in some of these areas where they're gonna have to be clearing a lot of snow. I guess that's a concern of mine. Bad on me, I guess I should have probably reached out to them before this. I just thought of that right now, that none of them have probably been communicated to at this point, be more in the future, and it's not a, you know, it's not a, one where something's required to get sent out, but, you know, thinking about it, obviously, this is something that would be pretty impactful. The visuals also helped me kind of realize what we're talking as far as the, kind of the randomness of where these areas would need to be cleared, and sometimes the, the size of scope of some of these clearings. So I guess that kind of brought some of that to light in my, some of the reasoning behind my motion to not include the snow removal for trails.
Councilmember Jarekic.
I was gonna initiate most of this discussion early on. Part of it is because there are areas where there should have been sidewalks installed according to. Part of it is because there are areas where there should have been sidewalks installed according to our ordinances and building requirements, and they weren't. So if you go Palmer Drive in the Royal and as you head from 10th Street up to about King's, Queen's Court, no, King's Court, it's concrete sidewalk. Then all of a sudden it changes to bituminous trail. So the residents who live along the concrete are required to clear the concrete sidewalks so people can walk. And the residents who live along the bituminous trail aren't required to clear that sidewalk. So there's an inequity in that whole situation. If it's a hard surface and it's used as a sidewalk and we want our residents to be able to walk in the winter, that should be, you know, it doesn't function as a sidewalk, you should be required to clear the snow from it.
Is that the, the one that's up on the screen right now? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Well, I, um, yeah. If you look for where that red line is, that is all bituminous trail.
And then on the.
But it functions as a sidewalk because the, for whatever reason, the developer is not required to put concrete sidewalks along the street, even though our ordinance said they should have.
But then further to the west, it turns into concrete.
It's, everything that's not, um, that's not in red is, is concrete.
On the south side?
For the east.
Or excuse me, further east.
On the, on the west side, yeah. Yeah, that's all concrete sidewalk.
So intriguing, can you go back to the Eastern Village Park one? 30th? We're, we're, we're done talking about Royal now.
Oh, you're talking about.
Good example.
By the park?
Yeah, it was like slide two or three. Three, yeah. Cause that's a curiosity as well. Like why is the sidewalk on the north side and the east side? But not on the southwest and south? It, it, it's the same thing, like if it functions as a sidewalk, it literally makes no, and I've never understood it. You two are engineers.
It, it, it lacks consistency.
And that's, that's frustrating.
Probably just, it's something we just missed at that time where when we see this, it's, you'd want more continuity with it.
Yeah.
So in the hypothetical, councilmember Hurn of approval of the change of the sidewalk language, but then not the snow removal.
I mean, I'm, oh, yeah.
Well, okay, so playing that out, trails means asphalt paved service, not less than. So there wouldn't be any conflict thus far with your proposal. Cause no trail, they're not juxtaposed yet. It wouldn't be saying that this is a, this is now considered for all intents and purposes, a walkable path that needs to be followed. It's, it's not going to that point yet.
I mean, it does say asphalt paved surface versus concrete surface. So this, I mean, that would still be considered a trail on the south and. I mean, I think if there's two examples of this in the city and they're that small of sections, like I'd rather just say, hey, like, you know, can the city clear that? Small amount versus.
There are, I've seen other cities, uh, s- select specific sections of trails and that's it. So, I mean, if, if this confuses and puts a huge burden on some people, that might be something we look at. Is just to include specific sections.
I kind of think of it like our, um, the crosswalk scenario. Where, um, there's some criteria for it. But in the, there's some criteria just to even kind of have it be something that could be brought to us in the first place. But then we kind of look at it a situation by situation basis versus, I don't know, just the, the randomness of what would be occurring with this just seems, um, pretty overwhelming to me.
I did my best to locate any of these scenarios. Not saying I couldn't have missed one, so.
Well, and honestly, thank you for compiling this too, cause it definitely helps to then see what we're, how this plays out.
I mean, are we aware of any other, from those ones that were shown that were kind of like the unique situation? Like the Royal or like this Eastern Village one?
What would the one, uh, in Carriage Station Park be categorized for, Marty? Between.
What's the question, Mayor?
Uh, what would the one in Carriage Station that doesn't abut? It's on the backside of homes. It's between, what is that, Marquis Trail and, uh, 50th?
Yes, that would not apply. It's not in the road right of way.
Yeah, got it.
The way you wrote this.
Okay. So it's in the road right of way.
Yeah, I think the intent was it was in the road right of way, functions as a sidewalk.
Got it. So that's where the balancing act, so there's already countless ones that are already removed to make the hodgepodge a smaller hodgepodge.
Right.
So now we're down to the ones that are functioning as a sidewalk.
Right.
And do our residents deserve to have those cleared? I think we all agree the answer is yes. The next question is then by who? The intriguing one for me is the two county ones along Keats and along County 14. Cause those are such large stretches and we do see people using that for recreation, for walking. I don't, cause I don't believe in exercise, but other people do. And they do it in the winter and they do it in the late fall. They do it in the early spring. I mean, I'm in, I'm intrigued.
I think as a, as a city, you need to be cognizant of the additional resources that it would take to remove trails, not just, uh, monetary wise or staff wise as well. And trails have not been included in that in the past. Again, I've always advocated for trying to grow our business depth, so we wouldn't have to raise taxes on residents where we're very rooftop. Still fairly rooftop heavy in the city and any increase in that is, it would make the, the taxpayers cover that cost. As opposed to being absorbed by an additional tax base.
Here, one way to maybe compromise on this would be to state that the trail has to be in the city right of way. That would lift the obligation on county roads. If that's a concern.
Right.
The part I'd, and I like that for two out of three, the one I don't like is then for Lake Elmo Ave. Cause that then is a, that county road is being used by residents to try to get into downtown. So we should just tell the county to pay for it.
I would like to move that we table this discussion till our next meeting, so we can think about this a little more and perhaps we'll have some additional thoughts.
Workshop or something maybe again.
Yeah. So you're making a motion to table?
Table till the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second for tabling? There's a second. All's in favor of tabling the topic until the next meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 Right. Topic's tabled.
Um, Mayor and Council, is there some direction that you would like to give staff on what we should prepare?
We don't know.
Otherwise, we're just gonna.
Right. So it isn't, it seems to me it's a bit of a quagmire of, of situations. And I think, I don't want to, uh, assume, uh, councilmember Dragicich's indication, it was trying to get places that are supposed to be able to walk on where the city has not been consistent in the development of certain areas to have it only be sidewalk or only be trail and they've mixed them. And therefore the ordinance is somewhat inconsistent with that uh, intended use.
Well, and it might be on council to chew on it ourselves and to think what we want to, maybe we literally come back with the same proposals and just vote on it. Or maybe come back and vote on Nick's amendment. I don't know if there's anything additional for, like you gave us the options. I don't know if there is anything that I think we might just need. Having the visuals now, I think churns the wheels a bit more. I, this isn't on staff, this is on us for needing to decide.
I mean, maybe we come back and I think part of the dilemma is like on the county roads where we have these things that function as sidewalks. If we say, well, those folks don't have to clean those sidewalks and the city's not going to clean them. Then we create some unintended problems like Lake Elmo Avenue. And so my thought was maybe as a council, we have some more thought, we might come up with some compromise that works. Maybe it's on those county roads, we have to decide as a organization if we're willing to incur the costs of doing them. Because we can't force someone to clear somebody else's right of way.
Right.
And that becomes, you know, then how do we fund that? We just haven't had a chance to see the visuals and, and ponder that thought. But maybe by the next meeting, some bolt of lightning will strike us and we'll find a compromise. Cause I do think Lake Elmo Avenue is important to, you know, we don't want to not have that cleared.
Right.
And, uh, just, just to add to this confusion or a little bit or.
You're not supposed to add to confusion, you're supposed to make clarification.
I was looking for a clarification in our recently adopted strategic plan for direction and it, so it doesn't really help. It says promote walkability and connectedness through planned and maintained sidewalk and trail systems.
Yes.
And that was in their plan, so.
So Nate understands when proposal developments come through, there's to be consistency between trails and sidewalks as we move forward.
Hear that?
Yeah.
Every word of it.
So we can't change the past, but we can make sure the future's much brighter.
And maybe, maybe for some help, Marty could advise us on some of those county roads. And what will be the time and, and effort to clear those? So we're not making a decision in a vacuum. He says it's a week of time every time it snows, that's different than if it's 10 hours, you know? I mean, we'd have some, put some context to it.
Well, if you have a winter like it was last year, it's two times a year. If you have a winter like it was three years ago, then it's gonna be every week.
I was thinking on the average mayor.
Love it.
I mean, maybe that's, that is something that we would request then. In the case of Lake Elmo Ave, Stillwater Boulevard and Keats, like, what do we know if that was contracted versus worst case and best case scenario for your team's labor? I, I think those are the outliers, right?
The other thing we could do would be to, you know, to modify the public works director's job description, so he has to do it on off hours.
I don't think that's gonna fly. I, I would never do that to you, Marty. I'll stand firm on that. Yeah, maybe if you could do kind of a time study, work study on what it would take on the county roads where there aren't residents available, it's not, you know, it's not, it's behind their house, it's, it's on a county road, there's no property owner facing it.
So.
You know.
Only if there's no abutting resident?
Yeah.
It's not a city right of way.
If it's not a city right of way. So Keats, Lake Elmo Avenue. Cause we, we'll face the same thing if they ever get around to doing Manning, you know, that stretch.
This is presumed the county right of way is eventually gonna have more, it'd be a thoroughfare for pedestrians if we, if this happens.
It's a thoroughfare maybe is.
Or like Lake Elmo Avenue is after they get the new school and extending a trail or sidewalk up to the school. That's going to be in there and, and maybe I, you know, I don't know how much trail sidewalk you clear, but and maybe there's some other adjacent cities that do more of that that could help you with, with, you know, what times it'll take for them to do it.
Well, now that we tabled it.
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna move on to upgraded ISO public protection classification.
Mayor and Council, I don't have a formal presentation on this tonight, but I did include the updated report into the packet for you to review. Every few years, we get reevaluated by the ISO for a public protection classification. The ISO is the insurance service office. They perform a, uh, a study of the fire department and the water utility and our dispatching capabilities. Um, and provide a, uh, this PPC number for insurance companies to use when they write policies and figure out what, what we owe on insurance. ISO is not used by all insurance companies. It's, it's truly up to each individual insurance company and how they follow, I mean, how they end up writing their policies. But, um, it is a benchmark that exists. It's the only type of benchmark that we have in the fire service that, uh, were looked at by an outside organization. It's in the state performance measures when they look at, um, the ISO rating. And this work was done mainly in 2024. And we just received the, the report not too long ago, um, spent some time taking a look at it. And this updated classification goes into effect June 1st. So in 2018, we were reevaluated, um, and received a classification of five with our, um, rating last, or this, this updated rating, we're down to a class four. So we've improved. ISO is rated from a scale of one to nine with one being the best and nine being, uh, insufficient for fire services. And we're, we're at a four. So there's a number of things that they look at. Like I said, they look at our, um, how we get and respond to 911 calls. So they look at the, the, um, how our 911 center at Washington County, um, handles the, the, the 911 calls. They look at what we're doing as a fire service, um, as a fire department with our staffing, our training, um, our apparatus. And how we form our companies or our crews. And then they take a look at, um, our water supply. And fire flows, what we have for hydrants, how we're doing maintenance, how we're doing flow testing. And then they come up with their rating. And in there you can see the scoring sheets, um, how, there, there's formulas that aren't visible to us, um, in this process. It's not the end all be all, um, but it is a, a measure that's out there and, um, some things that we always can strive for, um, to do better.
Insurance company use, use this to help their analytics on rates for residents?
Potentially.
Potentially.
If your insurance company uses ISO for this data. Some, uh, there are a number of insurance companies that use their own data, um, when they're writing policies. I get a phone call probably once a month for someone that's getting, uh, a new policy underwritten. And they just ask us, where's your station located? How much water do you have? Who do you operate with? And then they write their policy based on that. So it's definitely not the end all be all, it, it's not used by everybody. Like I said in my, my memo, I think the number one thing that, um, our property owners or insured could do with this updated rating is call their insurance provider and just say, hey, I see that Lake Elmo has a new ISO rating. Does this impact my, my policy? But I think the biggest thing that I've seen in my time here is when we add municipal water to a street or to a neighborhood that may be, um, to an existing neighborhood that hasn't had it, or we get it closer to your home. That has made, I think, the, the more considerable jump in, in, um, in policies and what you're paying in your premiums.
You might have want to let Mr. Schubert know that the previous fire chief is not the current fire chief.
I let them know and that's kind of a, a questioning thing when the, for a company that gathers a, a fair amount of data.
Yeah, something that's supposed to be ISO compliant, that's a little concerning.
Yep, I, I was the first email back to him, so.
Yeah. Cause like, who did they talk to?
But I wanted to take some time if you had some questions. One of the things that, that kind of stood out to me and the, the, really the little bit of feedback that I got immediately from ISO, you know, we consolidated two stations and, and we had a small knock in points based on our deployment analysis, because they look at, time from a station in, in road miles. And when they looked at the Island Trail neighborhood, um, because we shut down station two, station two is like 4.9 miles away from, from this neighborhood and we're now just over five miles away. They don't account for in that analysis, the fact that we have staff here or not, just the fact that the physical station exists. So again, it, it's a rating, it's a metric that's out there, it's, it's updated. People can contact their insurance providers to see if it's used by them. But there is definitely good things, you know, we take away because it's a national benchmark and we, um, you know,
Yeah.
try to, try to see where we stand with that. But if there's, if you have questions or, or want to get into it, please let me know. Like you said, I kind of stand for questions. Um, like you said, I kind of stand for questions at this point.
Questions for the chief at this point? There's no action for council. Yes, councilmember Holt.
Given that they're oh for one in calling you momquist and then oh for two with that example, were there examples that were useful that can be applied?
You know, I think um we look at what we can do for training and and to really to gain maximum points in training. We're kind of doing everything we can without saying we're gonna add in. Um, you know, we would have to do, I think, eighteen hours of live burn training for every staff every year to meet their maximum points for for that type of training. Um, we could get pretty close to that. But I think when you look at what you have to do for other training topics in fire, um it's hours a month and it's just, okay, where do we find that balance for our paid on call staff to 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 match what the demand is versus what we can do? And and fire isn't the only topic that we have to train on. You know, we have to cover a wide gamut of of training topics. So it's how do you fit this all in? Um, so we kind of look at that and go, where do we make improvements? I think we've made massive improvements in our pre-planning and fire inspections. We got, you know, twelve full points there um in their metric where we had um zero before. We've um made strides with uh in other areas, but it's we look at what can we do? Where can we improve? We can work with public works on on, you know, where we're making uh improvements on fire flow, you know, inspection data, how we record things. You know, we might record things right now in a way that works for us. They might look at an ISO as we need to make some improvements, you know? Um, we have some takeaways like from there. Now that we've got this done, now I can go back and ask our area rep, what do you see, what stands out? Um, and it's really, you know, up to that individual how they're interpreting the data we're providing them.
I agree.
No one else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, next on the agenda is council reports. Councilmember Dragojic.
No report.
Councilmember Holtz.
I mean, I'm sure the mayor will mention as well, but it was great to be out on the site yesterday for the groundbreaking at the new elementary off of Tenth and Lake Elmo. It's definitely be a an asset for the community, for those who are within the boundary. And it's definitely a something that'll be here for generations to come. But it was fantastic to be out there and see all those who definitely helped to make it happen, including our own staff. So thank you for coming out.
Yeah, that's about all I was gonna cover. Thank you, uh, councilmember Hearn.
See, the new slide presentations look great. Um, I actually think that's a really big thing, you know, the consistency from when the community members, you know, decide to watch one of these. When it impacts them, I think that is nice to see the consistency. So I know it seems like a little thing potentially, but I I think it's great and thanks for doing that and it's nice to have that consistency.
Uh, no report.
Staff reports.
Um, I just want to talk about our staff appreciation event that we had a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was nice to be able to give staff a little break and we had a waffle and chicken um food truck here. And then we had uh councilmember Holtz who came and said a few words, short, concise.
Yeah.
And then we also had a keynote speaker that talked about personal resiliency um with some examples of her from her life. So it was nice and look forward to incorporating um other fun events to celebrate our staff.
Great. Julie?
No report, thank you.
Gee, we already heard from you. You want to say something else?
I do have two quick updates, cause I I wanna uh send my appreciation to Public Works for helping us out. We took delivery of our new brush one skid unit yesterday and put it in service today. Needed the assistance of some uh forklifts and uh tool cat help um to get get that going and get the other one moved down to Public Works storage, so.
Great.
Um, that was, we purchased that unit out of the public safety dollars that we got from legislation um a couple of years ago and that finally came in. And then also tomorrow, Lake Elmo Park Reserve will be doing a large prescribed burn. So there will be plenty of smoke in the area. They're doing a a central burn area. Um, so we'll we'll definitely see smoke in the area. And if conditions change in the morning, they'll cancel it, but they do a really good job there of maintaining the parkland and um they do a lot of training for us and they're they're definitely on top of the burning and keeping that fuel low down.
Great, Marty?
Um, couple of dates with the PFAS, um research, Bay West is installing heavy out there, so it looks a little different. Can set a lot of the equipment today. And the SAF unit at Tablin is scheduled to be removed by the end of, or uh, yeah, end of May, beginning of June, so.
Okay.
See a couple of things.
All right. Nate?
No report.
Any report from council just filling in? Thank you very much. Um, future agenda workshop next week. Looks like we're talking about uh Clear Lake Development Concept Plan, Water Treatment Plant Proposal at Tenth and Inwood and uh Public Works Operational Assessment Presentation. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at nine fifteen. Thank you. I want to take a look at that.